The adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing and delivery and filing of this notice on January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Courier News and tap into Warren and filed with the Township Clerk of the Township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Good evening, everyone. It's my privilege tonight to enter into the minutes of the results of the election held on November seventh, two thousand and twenty-three from the Somerset County clerk certified results. On that date, three board members were elected to three-year Board of Education seats. They are Laura Keller, Stephen Tor, and Todd Weinstein. At the same election, one board seat for one year was also elected and that that seat was won by Richard Malfetta. At this time, I will administer the oath of office separately to each of those each of those new board members, and I will be starting with Ms. Keller in front. The next item on the agenda is the call of the roll. I will do that now. Mr. Desai?
Yes.
Ms. Fightbomb?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Malfetta?
Here.
Mr. Otto?
Here.
Mr. Tor?
Here.
Mr. Valentino?
Here.
Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
Mrs. Zahn?
Here.
The next item on the agenda is the election of a president. At this time, I will solicit nominations for the office of Board President.
I would like to nominate Mrs. Patricia Zahn to the role of Board President for Warren Township Schools for the year of two thousand and twenty-four.
Second. Nominations don't actually require a second, so the nomination. Yeah, okay. Ms. Ms. Keller will, uh, Ms. Keller's nomination is is entered into the record. Are there any other nominations? If there are any, if there aren't any nominations, can I solicit a motion to close nominations? Motion. Second. That one you did. I'll take a quick voice vote on that motion to close. All in favor? Any opposed? Right, I will now call the roll. Electing Mrs. Zahn as president. Mr. Desai?
Yes.
Mrs. Fightbomb?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Malfetta?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
You guys have it. Congratulations.
Thank you. At this time, I will accept nominations for Vice President of the Board of Education.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Keller.
Are there any other nominations? May I have a motion closing nominations for Vice President?
Motion to close nominations for Vice. Second.
Nominations for Vice President have been closed. Mr. Haven? If you may.
All right, this is the roll call. Ms. Keller for Vice President. Mr. Desai?
Yes.
Mrs. Fightbomb?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Malfetta?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
Congratulations, Ms. Keller.
Okay, moving on to annual reorganization action items, there are a few things I would like to draw the audience's attention to. In Section seven, Item D, the Board Member Code of Ethics. Each board member annually receives an agreed-uphold for Board Member Code of Ethics. If sometimes anyone out there is wondering about the job of a member of Board of Education, this is a good place to look for a better understanding, so I just wanted to draw the audience's attention to that. Also, Item E is the District Mission Statement. I believe going forward, we're going to include that at the back of all of our agendas so that you can access that at any time. For ease of reference, but that's a a good thing to go and just remind yourself of what the district's mission statement is. At this point, I'd like everyone to, on the board, to refer to F, which are the annual appointments. Each year at the reorganization meeting, the Board appoints members to serve on various outside bodies. It is the custom of the Board to first offer these positions to our newest members. Acting as an appointee to one of these bodies is an excellent way to become more deeply involved in public education in New Jersey, to form connections with members of other boards of education, and to enhance the training and skills that make each board member so valuable to the work we do here in Warren. The bodies that we seek appointments to are the New Jersey School Boards Assembly Association Delegate Assembly. The Assembly meets approximately twice a year on weekends, and it means this last year a virtual auction was available for attendance. The Somerset County Education Services Commissioning meets approximately once every four to eight weeks in the late afternoon. I once served on that and they fed us, so that was a good one to begin. And the Watchon Hills Municipal Alliance, which meets periodically, typically in the evenings. At this time, I'm going to ask if there's any board member who has served on these, I mean, three bodies, if they would like to offer any insight into their role in these bodies to assist our newest members in understanding what it is like to serve them. Do we have anybody who wants to comment on your service business?
I served on the virtually three years. It's interesting to get we, what we serve as everybody. They're just a very learning a lot about what they do.
Anyone else? All right then. At this point, I would like to invite our members to choose to serve as an appointee or alternate to the New Jersey School Boards Associate Delegate Assembly. Do you have any takers for the appointed position?
I'll take it.
Mr. Malfetta, thank you very much. I'll take the alternate again. Mr. Weinstein? The Somerset County Education Service Commission, an appointee and the alternate. And for the Watchon Hills Municipal Alliance. Oh, so many papers. Mr. Tor as the appointee and Mr. Valentino as the alternate. That was painless. Thank you, everybody. Okay, at that point, does any board member have any item under the reorganization action items that they need to pull for a separate vote or discussion? Seeing none?
A, we want to use it. B, we want to use it. E, F as amended. And C.
Do we have a second?
Right, I'll call the roll now, but before doing so, I have to be clear, on item F, I have Mr. Malfetta as the board rep to the NJ SBA. Mr. Weinstein is the alternate. Ms. Keller as the board rep to the Somerset County ESC. Mr. Desai is the alternate. I have Mr. Tor as the board rep to the Municipal Alliance and Mr. Valentino as well. All right, very good. And also, if I could add on the ethics item, each of you received a copy of the Code of Ethics, left at your spots. If you could sign that and return it to me before leaving tonight, I really appreciate it. Thank you. With that, I'll call the roll. Mr. Desai?
Yes.
Ms. Fightbomb?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Malfetta?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
And Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
Ms. Keller, the minutes?
We've all heard the Board of Education approves the public session minutes of the December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second. Right, I'll call the roll in the minutes. Mr. Desai?
Yes.
Mrs. 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 Fightbomb?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yeah.
Mr. Malfetta?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
Dr. Mingle, correspondence and information?
Thank you. No correspondence to report. There were four HIV investigations, two at the middle school. Neither was a confirmed incident of HIV, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. One investigation at Mount Horeb that was a confirmed incident, and one investigation at Woodland that was confirmed. And we had one suspension reported, which was an out-of-school suspension at Central School.
Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year to everyone, and congratulations to our newly sworn-in members, both the pre-returning members and to Mr. Malfetta, our newest member. Just a few free remarks. This is my eighth year as a board member and my twentieth year as an active participant in board meetings. At this, in that time, forty-seven Warren residents have served on this Board of Education. Having served with now twenty-seven of them myself and witnessed the hard work of twenty more, I believe each of them is an unsung hero of our community. The sacrifice of time and energy that is required for this job, I am sure surprised us all when you took offense. Yet, time and again, I have seen board members rise to those commitments. Without the sacrifices made by these members and by their families, we would not have the thriving and impressive school district that we currently have. As we look ahead to two thousand and twenty-four, the Board is going to have to lean again on the time and energy of each member. We have much work to do, and each and every one of us is an essential part of getting that work done. So thank you in advance for the time and energy that you put into our board meetings, our committee meetings, outside preparation, and for bringing your unique voices and perspectives to this work. Each of us is the community's voice in this school district, and it is a great responsibility. So thank you again for all that you do in the institution. With that, Dr. Mingle, do you have superintendent's room?
Thank you, Mrs. Zahn. Congratulations to everyone who was elected and sworn in tonight. I know I say something like this every year, but maybe it's the social studies history teacher in me, but it's always, it it's the moment where democracy is most visible, is a local election and the swearing-in process, and it's always nice to see family members, whether they're in person or online, seeing parents especially be sworn in to serve the community in that way. So congratulations and thank you for stepping into that role. Just one general comment, which is to make sure that everybody has their eyes on the weather, as I will. Tomorrow night's forecast is one of concern as far as rain and wind. The governor has already declared a state of emergency beginning at five P M. tomorrow, so we will be making decisions about after-school and evening activities by noon tomorrow, so we'll be communicating out about that, but that is a a general winter reminder as well, that we try to make those decisions as early in the morning as we can. Typically, by five fifteen or so, we've made a decision if we're going to have delayed openings or any kind of adjustments, but let's hope for, well, depends on your perspective. It'd be good for the kids to be able to do some sweating. I personally like that on a Saturday and Sunday.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. We do not have any presentations or discussions scheduled on tonight's agenda, so I'm going to move on to committee reports. The Curriculum and Technology Committee, Mr. Valentino?
Thank you, Mrs. Zahn. The Curriculum and Technology Committee had two meetings over the last few months of the year. On October sixteenth, there was one member present along with Dr. Mingle and Mr. Kimmich. So it was an informal meeting. We will be the curriculum guidelines and test scores. The November meeting, myself and Mr. Desai, the president, along with Dr. Mingle and Mr. Kimmich. We've been over the iReady update and compared trending from year to year since the beginning of iReady. So the family of several years in there, we can actually see the trends where the students are going, and everything is moving as projected. And iReady is nice because it allows you to see where students or different groups of students to each groups, et cetera, need some assistance, and they're being implemented and the test results are showing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valentino. That was our last set of reports for two thousand and twenty-three. I'm going to start immediately working on the committee assignments for two thousand and twenty-four. I ask that each board member please send me your committee assignment preferences for our standing committees. This reorg meeting has actually taken place a little later in January than in past years, and we have rapidly approaching committee meeting dates, the first of which is only days away. So please get me your list as quickly as possible. Send it to my board email address. I hope to have the committees set within the next couple of days. So tonight would be great when you go home, tomorrow morning if you noticed, please. Thank you very much. And with that, at this time, we need to have a commentary. This is the first opportunity for public commentary. I ask that everyone interested in addressing the board please raise their hand or use the Raise Your Hand feature on Zoom. Each speaker is asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address and by directing your comments to the presiding officer. That's me. Please know that the Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Public commentary is intended as an opportunity for the Board to receive such input, but is not intended as a Q and A session. Following public commentary, if appropriate, the presiding officer or the superintendent may provide some of those points. For this first opportunity, we ask that your comments be limited to items that appear on tonight's agenda. There will be a second comment opportunity for all other comments later in the meeting. So at this time, we'll give to our audience, is there anyone here who would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, going to Zoom. If anyone on Zoom would like to make a comment about any agenda item, please use the Raise Your Hand feature. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the first public commentary?
Motion.
All in favor? A, opposed, abstained. First public commentary is closed. Dr. Mingle, do you have anything you wish to address on action?
Yes, thank you. Just two things. Item A three. I just wanted to mention for the benefit of the public that the reason those are there are for, and every three years, the district, every district goes through something called the Quality Single Accountability Continuum, which is a state monitoring program. And we were advised that we need to make sure we had kindergarten and first grade world language cycles, which will be a brief introduction in place in the curriculum there, and then there were some formatting adjustments that had to be made in the others that'll all be up on the website tomorrow. And then this was in the community briefings, but the calendar revisions there are simply based on feedback we received from the community after adopting the calendars for the next two years about which day of the Dua Lee celebration would make the most sense for the school day off to be, and this just revises those. The the revisions are on the district website, and we'll communicate that out as well.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Does anyone on the board wish to pull any action item for a separate vote or discussion? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Keller?
Motion to move Items A one through A seven, B one through B five, C one through C fifteen, and D.
Motion. Mr. Want to see that as a second? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I'll call the roll. Mr.? All right, I'll call the roll. Mr. Desai?
Yes.
Mrs. Fightbomb?
Yes.
Ms. Keller? Mr. Malfetta?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
And thank you. Um, we do not have any unfinished business on tonight's agenda. Does any board member have any new business? None having been noticed in advance. Seeing none. Um, this will now be the second opportunity for public commentary, and it is open to any topic you wish to raise to the board's attention. Again, I ask that you raise your hand or use the raise your hand feature on Zoom. Remember that comments are limited to three minutes and please state your name and address before beginning. Looking first to the room. Seeing no one. Looking to Zoom. Last call. Okay, do I have a motion to close the second public commentary?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? The second public commentary is being closed.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.